Didn't get a chance to come into City Hall this evening. I had a last minute dog kerfuffle, so doing this from home, I appreciate Amy and everybody. Continuing to make this remote Zoom such an easy option for us all. Right. So I got an email that Gabe was not going to be able to join us this evening. I'm not sure if he copied anybody else, but he let Amy and I know that he wasn't going to be joining us. So with Jim, Annette, Susie and myself, we've got four. Amy, if you can hear me, is that sufficient for a quorum for what we need to do tonight?
I believe so.
Okay. I don't think we're going to be expecting anybody else. So unless anybody has a reason, we want to delay a few more minutes, we can get started. Assuming that's the case, we'll get started this evening. We're recording now. This is the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, November 21st for the city of Carlton. I'll have Amy do our standard roll call.
All right. Commissioner Madrid in attendance?
Here.
Commissioner Bandi. Perfect. Commissioner Terrell?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Nordstrom. We do not see on the line and Chair Stewart?
Hey there.
That is all that I know is going to be absent and here, so we are accounted for and ready to go.
All right. Our first item of business this evening is approving the minutes from October 17, 2022, our meeting last month, starting at page two of our meeting packet. I reviewed it. I didn't see anything that I thought needed to be supplemented there. I thought it was a pretty good abbreviation and recitation of what we went through and what we're revisiting this evening. Did anybody have any proposed changes? Seeing all horizontally shaking in the right direction, anybody want to move to approve? Annette moves to approve?
I second.
I'll second.
Ooh, double second.
Suzie Beebe.
Suzie.
All in favor, say hi.
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 All right, the motion passes unanimously at this point. We'd like to invite anybody who has from our community for citizen comments, if you'd like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda tonight, which is the subdivision. If you are a member of our community, you'd like to speak now. Is there anybody at City Hall, Amy?
There's none.
There's not. I see one individual, Ms. Deb Zimmerman, connecting to audio, and that's the only other person who I thought might be interested in making a public comment tonight. So if that's the case, Ms. Zimmerman, you're welcome. If you connect in a little bit, you're welcome to provide citizen comment at the end of our meeting. But in the efforts of speeding through and returning to our item, we'll move on to our primary agenda item this evening. It's a revisit to SUB 2022-01, a subdivision, a floodplain permit 2022-01 at 548 North Fourth Street from the applicant Dan Armstrong. This was continued from October 17, 2022. Mr. Jenkins, because it's a continuance, do I need to go ahead and restate the hearing language?
No, sir. You guys did not continue the hearing. You just continued the the meeting. You left the record open, so I can give a a summary of of kind of what's happened in the interim and then some of the additions that you've received in the staff report. There's really only one and then move from there and then we'll open it up for questions for any of you, if you have any of them, for either myself or Gordon's here as well. If you have any specific drainage related questions and then you'll move directly into deliberations.
Understood. Thank you very much. We'll let you proceed.
Okay, well, as you all know, at last month's meeting, you continued the meeting, but left the public record open at the request of of, I believe, Mr. Stamp, who was representing one of the neighbors to the proposed subdivision to allow them to submit comment and they did submit comment. You also have received a copy of that from Amy. Essentially, the request as as stated at the meeting was for the applicant to provide easements for public water, sanitary sewer and storm drainage across the property for future development of the neighboring site. The applicant has agreed to that condition, to have that condition added, and that's added as condition N or COA N. So that's the first thing to note. The second element, we just completed in the last week, so this was after the staff report went out, but the applicant has also kindly agreed to add a condition. Let me read it out to mandate that the HOA agreement will include a clause which would allow city staff to enter the property to inspect storm drainage facilities and require the HOA to address insufficiencies. It would also give the city the authority to promote form any essential work at the cost of the HOA. So that was in response to concern that the Planning Commission raised about, you know, potential issues with with an HOA maintaining a private drainage maintenance system. So we do have Gordon here. If you have any specific questions about that, but this is something that's that's relatively standard for HOA agreements to have some sort of provision like this. But if you have any specific questions, he's he's here to make it so I don't have to answer questions about something I don't know that much about. So those are the only two additions. I'll note that that we also Shannon asked Gordon and I to provide a memo on private streets, but that is not related to this specific hearing. That was just more of an informational and something that we can certainly address, but I hope that was helpful in kind of learning. You know, the ins and outs of why sometimes we recommend private streets, sometimes why we don't, some of the issues, benefits, costs, all that stuff. So but the the only two things that that were added as far as this subdivision 2022-01 goes were those two added conditions and the citizen comment that was provided once the record or before the record closed. So that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions. And like I said, Gordon's here as well. So if you have any questions before you move into deliberations, please let me know.
One question came to mind in your addition of the the new condition, which I presume would be condition O, following condition and would be if the city does end up advancing the costs, what does that does that look like? Does that go as a lean against the individual lots or is it just a private enforcement cause of action with the city?
So typically it would be just the cost would go to the HOA and then the HOA would distribute as necessary. That's typically how it would go. I don't know the exact details of, you know, how that would be processed legally. But this would, you know, this document will eventually be reviewed by staff and the city attorney. So in the past, when when there's been something like this, it's just been billed directly to the HOA and then you know, it's their responsibility to to figure out how that's distributed. But that's technically typically something that's that's included directly in the HOA.
I see Annette had her hand up.
Sorry, I'm on my phone here. So Kyle, what are the other HOAs within Carlton?
I believe there's, so there's, I believe Carlton Crest has an HOA. I'm not aware of that many other ones. Maybe Amy, can you give any background if you know of any others?
There is an HOA on Declaration Drive.
Yes.
Yeah, the other beauty. And there is some others, but they are not really enforced and they haven't really come to fruition yet.
Okay, thank you.
Susie, did you have any follow up questions? I thought you might. We just want to put you off of mute, Susie.
Kyle, thanks so much for your email explaining everything I needed to think about and I really appreciate it. It was super helpful. But then I do have a question for Gordon, actually. So Gordon, what sort of maintenance actually is involved? Is it annual maintenance, monthly maintenance? Could you kind of give me an idea of what sort of maintenance would happen?
On this storm system of the kind that they have, they essentially have a catch basin. And so you would probably check it once a year. And if it needed cleaning out, you know, they'd either vac it out or you just get some shovels and and dig out the material and get rid of it. And that's, you know, because essentially all they've got is a catch basin with a a oil waters separator. So that's like a downturned elbow and then a pipe that goes and discharges to the ground. So not much.
Sure. And so the kind of the catch basin will collect things like plastic bottles and paper garbage and plastic wrappers and things?
Anything that's in the street, it gets washed down and can go through the the grate. So it's not going to be big stuff.
Uh huh. Okay, and then things like fertilizer runoff and things like that from lawns. Does that end up there too? And is there any treatment options for those before they enter into the watershed?
Well, typically what the catch basin is catching is what's in the street. And so the lawns, anything that gets put on the lawns typically is going to go down. It's going to infiltrate into the ground. So if there's spills that occur in the street, that's why you have the downturned elbow.
Right.
So that anything like an oil would go to the surface and and the actual outlet is like six inches below the surface. So the oil is going to float.
Sure. And and then what happens when, I mean, is there a way to clean that oil out? So at some point, it doesn't just continue to build?
Oh, sure, you vacuum it out.
And that's that's an annual process?
I know that's as needed. You don't really see a lot of oil unless there's been a spill.
Sure.
Typically, you you just go around and see after, you know, probably sometime in early summer and then late summer after the first big flush, you probably go and look in your catch base and then see how full it is or see what's in there.
And so that would be a twice annual visual inspection then?
Well, it's probably most places, it's just once you go down there, but people walk by, so they'll look at it. But if the city was doing this on city property.
When you say people walk by, what does that mean? What kind of people?
Well, the people that live there. No, the people that live there, I'm sure they'll they'll walk by it. But officially, officially, they only need to do it once a year. Just look in it, check it.
Okay, and so that annual inspection would happen, it would be scheduled and it would be for sure would happen as per the the agreement with the city and the HOA.
The HOA would probably spell out what's what's required. You know, it hasn't been written yet. But those typically are reviewed and if there is stormwater treatment as part of a HOA, typically there'd be a listing of what are the actions that are proposed
Sure.
or required.
Sure. So Kyle, is that going to be written in like an annual inspection then in that HOA agreement?
No, that was my understanding of how, you know, the process wouldn't go. The reason why it's just, we wanted to make sure that the wording of the the COA, you know, was left so that Gordon and I, mainly Gordon, could make sure that all of the necessary, you know, inspections and then listings that that he just mentioned could be included. So it's it's going to be on us to to work with the applicant and make sure that that language is included in there.
And so and I can be confident that that language, that there will be an annual inspection. Because I I mean, I guess I'm not comfortable with just somebody walking by and hoping they look in the catch basin and say, oh, yeah, it's full or it's not.
I think that was, you know, I I think what I was trying to say is they got to do it once a year and I'm sure somebody is going to be just happen to walk by and that's not a requirement. You know, they live there, they'll look at it.
Can can we make it a requirement that the catch basin is checked annually? I mean, I I'll be honest, I love everything about that street. I think the street is a well-designed street. It has sidewalks. It's small. It won't be scary to for pedestrians and bicyclists to walk on. And the only catch, the only catch piece that worries me is is water flowing, is dirty water flowing into the into the watershed. And so I actually, I would like to hear that there will be somebody actually that does this work and somebody maybe that isn't just kind of wandering by and checking it, that it's a that it's a schedule annual inspection.
That, well, I I guess I'll say it again, annually, they should do it and then I'm sure somebody just wanders by, but that's not what's going to be in the HOA. It's going to be the annual inspection.
Perfect.
That's in the HOA.
Perfect.
I guess the underlying question there that would assuage Susie's thing is, or Susie's concern is, is this, is it just the honor code system or is this an annualized email that's sent to city council that's or city council sent to Amy that just says, we've completed our annual inspection. It has passed for this year. It's scheduled for next year. Thanks. Have a nice day. Like, is are we adding that type of a check? Or is it, is it, is it going to be in the HOA documents without any sort of real teeth?
Thanks for that clarification. That's exactly what I mean.
Well, we can put those kind of teeth in it. If the city wants to do that, that's fine.
I think an email, you know, once a year would would kind of assuage Susie's concern and at least keep some sort of a documentary trail. If by the third or fourth year, the city is in a position where we're noticing some inappropriate runoff and then the city comes and steps in and we go, well, you know what? We've got three years worth of emails here, you know, indicating that this was cleaned out satisfactorily. But, you know, in clearing this out, there's a couple of beer bottles in there that have, you know, as I've recently learned, beer bottles have a made by, they're a made on date on them and they're three-year-old beer bottles. Means the thing probably wasn't cleaned out. That sort of, I think, internal check on the honor code system would be, I think, more than enough. And if it's just a single email, then, you know, we've got a record from the HOA designee to city council, or excuse me, to the city representative saying, we've done this for the year. Would you be okay with that, Susie? It's just a
Yeah, that that exactly, that, yeah, thank you for articulating my thoughts. Yes.
Okay, so I I think we could just say as a as a supplement to that condition, just say that on an annual basis, whenever it's determined with the city, I think Gordon was saying that after the first major flush would be a good time to check it. So maybe November 1 each year. They, you know, they've got a 30-day period to shoot the city a note to say they've they've done a visual inspection and found it to be suitable. Is that okay for you, Susie?
Yeah, I mean, as long as they really, I just so scares me about HOAs and deferring maintenance. That's that's my only concern. And, you know, I can just see that, like, somebody like me would be in charge of go looking at the catch basin and I'd be like, well, I don't know what the hell.
It's plain to me. Is this, couldn't this be part of that if we were to do some sort of annual inspection, if the city were to do that?
Yes.
I I was my assumption that this would just be included in that inspection.
Yes, that the city actual, the city maintenance
Right.
crew would inspect it. Yes, that would that would be better. Yeah.
Right. That was that was that was my interpretation of what what this would include.
Yes, thank you.
The the actual normal interpretation of that is the city has the opportunity to go there anytime they want to see if the catch basin is being maintained. That's that's what the the HOA condition would give the city. So it's they can go there anytime. So look in that catch basin and see, yeah, it's being done. No, it's not.
Right. So I guess at a minimum, once annually, maybe would that be, would that be something that we could just add? That would be a pretty straightforward check so that it wasn't more general. I think that's what Commissioner Terrell is asking. I think that's a pretty easy one. I don't think that a once annual check would be that or would be that much of a burden.
No.
I think that's a good, a good resolution and just a simple little check that we can do. I see Annette's got her hand up. Still can't hear you, Annette, though. Amy, could you help us with a request to unmute on Annette, please?
There we go. All right, thank you. Sorry, I just the screen, the phone, whatever. In considering my fellow commissioners' concerns and and certainly echoing them and having had a month to think about it, Gordon, I've got a couple of questions for you because a catchment basin, I mean, approximately, what are the dimensions of this? And I'm kind of envisioning something with reeds and cattails and ducks in it. Is that kind of what we're thinking?
No, a catch basin is something that you see in the streets. It's when you're walking down the street and you see that grate that's over by the curb.
So it's the
That's a catch basin.
Okay, so indentation.
No, it it it's a concrete basin. So it's probably three and a half feet deep, two feet wide, three feet long. And it's got a grate in it. Yeah, that's under the grate.
So under the grate, okay.
Then there's a pipe that goes out of it to wherever it discharges.
And where is it discharging?
It's going to discharge in this instance towards Han Creek.
Right.
So not directly into the channel. It's going to discharge onto the ground. And then the water will find its way to Han Creek.
Right. Well, what I'd like to see, and I don't know if Commissioner Terrell will will agree with me, visual inspections are great. No pun intended, great. But what I'd like to see, you know, a walk by, okay, what I'd like to see is a once annual billable maintenance provable task that they do some sort of water sampling at that exit, because if there's pollutants that are going into Han Creek, I don't want to be looking at three years of emails going, oh, was it my fault? Is it your fault? I'd actually like to see an annual water quality or water inspection. So if there's any kind other than, you know, the expected, you know, particulates, including oil and fertilizer. But if there's anything else funky heading toward Han Creek, we need to know about it before it happens. And I don't think requiring a once annual billable water quality test is going to break the bank of any HOA. And I think that'll give this actual, not teeth, but there'll be an actual maintenance record of what's coming out from that catchment basin going toward the creek. A visual isn't going to get it. I want a laboratory test of whatever's coming out of there once, once a year. That's what I'd like to see.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, please do.
So, okay. So this is a issue that has been very contentious within the stormwater community. And it's been one that has been discussed and debated for probably at least a decade. And initially, DQ wanted to on their permits, have all sorts of stormwater testing done. In the end, unless you have a MS4 permit, it's not required because they've come to the conclusion that one, it's very difficult to do because there's not flow going out of that discharge, except for in the middle of a storm event. When is that? Maybe the middle of the night. Maybe, you know, whenever there's a storm event, somebody has to run out there. It's not like taking a test at the water treatment plant or the wastewater plant where there's always something that you can test. This is intermittent and difficult to know when you have to go out there and do it. And the amount, what they test for is they did tons of research on what potentially could be found there and came down to very few items that would be taken care of essentially with what they considered approvable treatment methods. So
Are you talking Even when you have heavy metals or what?
No, I I don't have the the constituents on the top of my head, so I can't tell you that, Annette.
Well.
But what they came down to was if you do these specific treatment methods, you don't have to do any testing.
What what treatment methods?
Well, it's things like if you had a swale, that's considered a BMP, best management practice.
Right, and that's what I was envisioning.
Well, we we could actually, you know, that could be a condition of approval is that on the discharge, they build a small swell. That's
Well, it would give us that much more buffer. It'd give us that much more buffer.
Size.
Toward a very delicate creek.
For that size facility, we don't, as a city, have that requirement right now because we are not under a a permit for stormwater at this time.
Right.
Mercury TMDL. Yeah, the Mercury TMDL has come in, but we have per that five years before we need to require treatment.
Right, but we as a commission can make that a requirement. And I think that the swale idea has a lot of merit because it would give us that much more of a buffer. If anything funky was detected there before it hits the creek, and I think that I very much share and echo Commissioner Terrell's tenuous nervousness about citing this thing in a very ecologically delicate place. So I was envisioning that there was some sort of swale. I don't think, again, that's going to break the bank. I mean, visually, it'd be very appealing. But in terms of buffering, any potential muck that's contaminated hitting Han Creek, you'd have a better chance of isolating it before it it actually goes into Han Creek and then it's too late. And then people are looking at us thinking, what kind of idiots would would cite something so close to such an ecologically delicate place? So that's my two cents. I would like to see, once you're testing, and I don't think because of the upside down bend, it has to be in the middle of the night. It's Oregon. It rains six months out of the year plus. Or you could test the ground right underneath the upside down bend and or the 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 water that would be contained in the swell in the swell.
So I I I I do want to, I do want to chime in is that we do not, as a commission, you do not have the ability to essentially place whatever conditions you would like on a land use. You can request that the applicant, you know, agree to these conditions of approval, but if they are not specifically related to the development code and our standards, we do not have the ability to force that to happen. So what we've done so far is we've said, okay, these are concerns. Can the, can you, can you, as the applicant, address? And we've gone to the applicant and said, okay, are you willing to address these concerns? So anything that goes beyond the constraints of our development code from an objectivity standpoint, we cannot just impose on the applicant. So you know, we can ask Jackie Urb with with AKS here if that's something that they would be willing to include and that we can, you know, impose on them as a COA. But as far as conditions, conditions are meant to reflect something, help the application meet the help the application meet the development code or some other standard that's applicable to the application. So I just want to, I I totally understand the concerns that that everyone's bringing up, but I want to make sure that that we're aware that they're practically and from a land use standpoint, we do have limits on what we can force an applicant to do. We can ask them to do some of these things, but there's, there's a difference there. So I just wanted to make that point before we move forward.
Appreciate that, Kyle. So asking nicely, Jackie, would you want to respond to that?
Are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Hey, this is Cody with AKS. I'm hoping that one thing that we can point out in the plans that that might mitigate some of the fear here and that. I'm hoping this, this means what you're looking for is that one thing that will get included is a fairly substantial stormwater outfall, which usually entails having a rock line channel that guides discharge and dissipates that energy and also catches a lot of those sediment debris from actually reaching the channel or in this case, the wetland boundary. That's roughly fifteen feet away from where the current outlet is. And so that that's already included in the plans as is, and would be something that development would include.
So something that would actually look like a creek bed, am I understanding you?
Yeah, so it'd have those lined lined with rip rap, so coriastial rocks. It would naturally see some vegetation buildup over time perchance, but that's really where the dissipation of energy from the flows off of off of that road that are entering that catch basin and get dissipated. And also has that rigidity to it that it catches anything that goes through the catch basin before it ends up going to the creek there.
But if there was enough velocity, say, in a storm event, wouldn't it just wash clean? Do you, do you see any, any big, again, asking very nicely, do you see any big obstacle to putting a swale in there?
I don't know if it will function in the same manner. So there's, there's a fairly constrained space there. So yeah, so that's why the fifteen feet is is taken up by that outfall with the rock. That rock is sized per code to dissipate the energy for the expected storm.
You know, I think what what I'm saying, just to reiterate, energy is one thing, but pollutants are are something else.
Agreed.
And so that that's where the nervousness comes in. I mean, I just, I'm uncomfortable with the proximity. I'd be less uncomfortable with a swale. It's, yeah, it's, it's the sighting of this and the ecological delicacy of where it's at that have me most concerned.
Absolutely. And and I think that's really why those efforts that Gordon was mentioning are are in the process of coming along. I think with the constraints that are posed by the site, what we've included really is trying to meet what you're looking for, Annette, and trying to work within what the code allows to to do here. I think it's also worth mentioning that the wetland boundary that we are avoiding disturbing has a fairly large offset from where you actually see the channel. So we don't disturb any of the wetland. The rock outfall from that outfall is to the edge of that wetland dissipates. What you'll see is the natural vegetative filter strip between that wetland boundary and approximately what I'd say from, from a bird's eye view here, sixty feet between the edge of the wetland and that stream channel center, that you're going to see that natural filtration through the vegetation there.
I was just gonna say, so from that drone shot, because that's where I was looking to, so you're, you're in the lower left hand corner.
I'm, if, are you looking at our plan sheet that has the?
Well, I mean, I've I've reviewed the the packet. But but there was drone shot, and because there's so much trees and and it's just, it's difficult to get a sense of it. So in the drive by that I did, which I had talked about last meeting, and that's where I had some concerns about the railing and the walkway and whatnot, too, and the slope of the land. So in that, that bird's eye view that you were referring to, and I think we're talking about the same thing. You're in that lower left hand quadrant, right?
You got it.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're on the same book and page.
Yes, I think we are.
I think so.
And so mentioning those couple of things and that, I think we're what's going to end up happening here based off of what this, the pattern of development and then what is naturally there, be it the the distance between the edge of wetland, the means of dissipation at the outlet, I think the intent of what you are trying to capture is met as designed. I think in developments that don't have particularly this setup, what Gordon's alluding to in that additional code that is in the works, it is going to be essential for making sure that things like that are incorporated. But I think what you're looking for is met here.
Any other questions or do we have? Annette's got one more. Go ahead and unmute Annette.
There we go. So in in visualizing from that drone shot, the the curve of the sidewalk and whatnot, is there just, and I couldn't tell from the drawings, is there just one of the catchment basements?
Correct. There's one catchment, just based on the size of this development, that's, that's all that's needed to capture that privacy.
Right, right. But I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense. So from the arc of that sidewalk and the way the elevation is, so roughly it'll be at the, at the middle of that arc because that's the lowest point in elevation, am I correct?
You got it.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
I think I've had my general questions answered, and I feel pretty comfortable that we could move forward. But Jim has not had any comments. Is there anything you wanted to add, Jim, or do you feel like everybody's gonna poke all the sides of the bear that are helpful for your deliberation?
I think, I think everybody's pretty much covered all the things I was concerned about, so.
Excellent. Well, I think at this point, we can either make a decision on moving forward. I think Kyle's done a real good job of putting us together the conditions on page twenty one through twenty two with the proviso that we have a new condition that I'll have him read here. Subject to, you know, it sounds like, well, I I don't want to be presumptuous. I I think it was agreed between all of us that at least some sort of annualized notification would be reasonable. We're going to have the city doing the, an annual inspection. And then the, with respect to teeth, the the ongoing agreement between the city and the HOA will have provisions for the HOA's responsibility for costs in the event that it's not being handled directly by the HOA. I feel comfortable with that stuff, but with that, with those, those conditions, does anybody else have anything else they want? Or if not, we welcome a motion at this point. I'm not able to make the motion. Otherwise, I would.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
And to clarify, Jim, that's a motion that we approve with the conditions A through N found in twenty one, page twenty one and twenty two of the packet, as well as condition O that Kyle shared with us earlier, and that includes
Would you like me to read that?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
The HOA agreement shall include a clause allowing city staff to enter the property to inspect the storm drainage facilities and require the HOA to address any identified insufficiencies. The clause should also give the city the authority to perform the required work at the cost of the HOA. Such inspection will be performed at a minimum of one time per year, or once annually, I guess is a better way to phrase that.
And we're suggesting that the HOA likewise provide us a a annual email, let's call it, in the month of November, certifying that they've take, they've taken a look on their end. Is, is my correct, Susie? That would be helpful.
I think it would. I I, yeah, I I think it would. I mean, I think if the city is is actually inspecting it, that that makes me comfort, more comfortable. So, yeah, I, yeah, I think it's as much as we can hope for, given the constraints of the code. Yes.
So on to Kyle's condition O, we add the annual.
Well, so I think the idea is that if the city is doing that inspection, there wouldn't really be a need for the HOA to provide.
Okay.
That's what I think, yeah. As long as the city actually, and and I guess, can we comment, will the city actually have staff to do that? Because sometimes when we ask these things, I hear, maybe Shannon, you can speak to that. I mean, do we have staff for that to do that annual inspection?
Sorry, apologize for the delay in unmuting. We will have staff to be able to do that annual inspection.
Okay, thank you. So we're good then.
So yes, Kyle, I'm making a motion with all of the additions that you have provided to the, to the original proposal that we approve it. And as currently written.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Bandy. We've got a second from Susie Terrell. All in favor of approving SUB twenty twenty two dash zero one and FLP twenty twenty two dash zero one. Am I saying that sufficiently, Mr. Jenkins, for your purposes?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, raise your hand. All not in favor? All right, Commissioner Madrid is in opposition. Commissioner Terrell, myself, and Commissioner Bandy have approved it. The matter passes three to four. And I believe this matter is dispensed with. If there's no other questions for staff or from the applicant that we need to address at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Jenkins?
That's correct.
All right, that's our primary agenda item for the evening. We do have a couple other individuals who have joined us in Zoom land who may or may not have citizen comments for a non-agenda item, Ms.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I, can I, I actually, I just wanted to reassure Annette that I have the same concern she has. Honestly, it was, it's really heartbreaking. And just reassure her that we're working on the comprehensive plan and the code updates so that things like rain gardens and things will be, we will, developers will be forced to do those things. I mean, honestly, it's heartbreaking to me to not see good drainage design with rain gardens and detention on site. But I, I I felt constrained by our code. So thanks for your vigilance and for your own. My heart was with you, but my brain had to go the other way. So that's all.
It's, thank you, Susie. A very good reminder that we are in the process. If anybody in the community is watching this live or later, we are in the middle of updating our development code, and these are among the many things that are considered and will be included in a revitalization, thinking about the next twenty years. So if you are seeing this in Zoom land now, live or in the future, please get involved. Contact City Hall. There's a lot of opportunities to give your voice. You know, we are, as Kyle so gracefully told us, we are constrained by the legalities of the position in land use laws. But if those laws change and those ordinances change, development code changes, the planning commission is in in a position to give better voice to individualize and specific concerns with respect to ecological management or any one of a number of other things that are more important now than perhaps they were twenty years ago, forty years ago, when the code was last revised. So with that, I double checking again with Amy. We don't have anybody at City Hall seeking to give a citizen comment on anything tonight.
Can I, well, sorry. Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, when it comes time for site design review, I'm asking very, very nicely that trees be planted in the front yards because that will help immensely with that storm drainage issue. So that's my, that's my request.
Excellent. Amy, once and hopefully for the last time, is there anybody at City Hall that would like to chat?
There is none.
I don't see anybody out here in Zoom land. So with that, do we have any new business or any other comments on non-agenda items by any commissioners for the month of November? Annette, the floor is yours. Amy, would you mind helping with the request to unmute?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, I just wanted to ask for a follow up, and I know to the city manager, when I brought it up last month about the pits of despair next to several of the improved sidewalk intersections, and she said there was a specific type of I not pea gravel, but a specific type of fill that they were still waiting on, and I noticed that they're still not done. So I'm just wondering, are we any closer? Thank you.
The short answer is we are closer. The longer answer is they had trouble finding a resource for their specific type of fill. They believe they have found one, and I was even encouraged by the project manager saying between him and I that our squeaky wheel probably got resolved sooner rather than later, even if the holes aren't filled in quite yet. But we're that much closer.
Because I would just say as an added thing, I mean, I just have concerns about liability if somebody breaks a leg or an ankle and they're, you know, eighteen inches deep next to the sidewalk. So is it possible, I I'm sure I would not win any fans at Public Works, is it possible to put some sort of interim pea gravel or something in there? I understand they'd have to shovel it back out, but you know, if it saved the city a lawsuit, I just, every time I I walk or I drive by those, I just go, oh, it scares me.
ODOT has assured me that they're working on it, that they have encouraged us not to fill it in in the interim. And as far as you're worrying about liability and concerns about people rolling or breaking an ankle, stop reading my emails, Annette. Those are exactly the words that I've used.
Yeah, well, I, and I want to thank you for being on it. I know the the wheels move slowly. But you know, there, there is a lot of pedestrian use there, and that was the only reason that I raised it, not to be a thorn in anyone's side. I appreciate you sharing, and thank you.
Absolutely. We're a thorn in their side together.
Susie, go for it.
Have, has Seventh Street been incorporated into the city yet? Or do we own Seventh Street yet? Tell Seventh Street.
Is the question, has the plat been recorded?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so as promised, we get to talk about Cheryl's or bike lanes or some sort of remediation for that street, yes?
That's up to you guys.
Yes, okay, so I would like that as an agenda item for next month, please. Can we do that? Somebody?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
To Mr. Jenkins and Amy so that we can have that as a subtopic. We'll revisit and see what we can do.
And on a, sorry to interrupt, on a somewhat but not really related note, I do want to encourage, if you guys have questions, whether it's a land use application or just something general about the code that you think is off or you don't understand or something like that, please feel free to, you know, go through Amy first and Shannon, but feel free to ask questions. I think it's, it's useful to have those concerns clarified before meetings so that when we get into meetings, then you know, you all have those questions answered to the best of our abilities at least, and you can, you know, move forward with with the discussions. I, you know, I really appreciate, you know, Susan, I I appreciate the email that you sent. I enjoy, well, I don't enjoy necessarily writing those. But I think it's, I think it's useful to to have those questions asked, and and it's certainly something that as long as it's not, you know, made into a group discussion that that we're certainly happy to answer. So just wanted to put that out there. And then you know, as you all know, the code update is coming. So if there are certain things, there's going to be a process by which those can be addressed. But there are items on there that we've identified that need to be addressed. Some of them have come up. A lot of them are as a result of of many of these discussions that we've had during these applications. So just wanted to mention that that we do have a lot of the things and concerns that that have been brought up in the last, I don't know, five years or at least two years since I've been here on that list. It's going to be up to you guys and and council and the advisory committee and the public to, you know, really evaluate how those are, you know, added to the code. So just wanted to mention that really quickly, and I I do appreciate everyone's interest and and concern about all the different issues. So just wanted to mention that.
Kyle, can I, can I bring up one thing? Like when we get all of our questions answered before the meeting, then it would appear to the public, I'm afraid, that we don't then it would appear to the public, I'm afraid, that we don't have any questions and we don't care or we're not concerned about those issues. So
I'm not saying, I'm not saying get, get all of your questions answered necessarily. I'm just saying if, if there's something that, that you're confused about or that understand in the body of the staff report, for instance, feel free to ask. That doesn't mean, you know, you need to have the full discussion. That's not, that's not what I'm saying. It's just if there's something that you're confused about, feel free to, to have that clarified. That should have worked better, but that's
No, I, I, yeah, I understand. I appreciate that. I just wanted to kind of give you, fill you in why sometimes I ask questions because I want people to know my thinking.
Feel free to double ask. If you need to double ask, double ask, but I'm, I'm always happy to clarify as needed. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Kyle.
All right, Annette.
Just one other question, just for edification. Could either Shannon or whomever give us just a quick update on the status of the pump station on East Main Street? I know we're at the deadline for when it's supposed to be finished. It doesn't appear to be.
This cord, I can tell you where it is. The, it's nearly finished. There was the pump suppliers sent the wrong power cords with their pump. So they had to go back and get the new ones. And I believe those have been now supplied. They're in the process of installing those and once those have been installed, then we go through the startup process.
So what's your timeline, do you think, Gordon?
You know, I'm thinking that the startup process will be in early November. And we'll go probably at least two weeks.
Do you mean early December?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Forgot what
I mean, I was thinking first year. Okay.
Yeah, it could be up and, could be up and running mid-December. If there's glitches, it could be early in twenty twenty-three January.
Okay, I know. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, looks like we have extinguished the comments for the evening. With that, would somebody like to move to adjourners for the month? Annette's moving. It's like Susie's getting ready for a second. Ooh, Jim beat it to it. And in a second, everybody approves by waving bye-bye. Have a great month, everybody. Mr. Jenkins, thank you for your time and service, Amy as well, Shannon as well. Gordon, thanks for being here. Everybody have a wonderful. Enjoy your
Thank you all.
When is our next meeting?
Our next meeting will be the third Monday in December.
Okay, I'll pencil it in. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye-bye.
Likewise.